Those are my favorite.
Clearly, by way of introduction. Sorry, thank you. By way of introduction, my name is Matt Komkar and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is for April eighth nineteen, two thousand twenty-five. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Majewski.
Present.
Commissioner Sizer.
Present.
Commissioner Strasky.
Present.
Commissioner Beppler.
Present.
Commissioner Kram.
Here.
Lester Fields.
Present.
Kamkar.
Present. Thank you for that. Minutes, has everyone has had the chance to review their minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If you could, please.
Commissioner Majewski.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Strasky.
Hi.
Mr. Beppler.
Hi.
Mr. Kram.
Hi.
Lester Fields.
Hi.
Mr. Kamkar.
Hi. Thank you for that. Okay, Communications. Director, do we have any communications?
Chair Kamkar, Commissioners, both Communications, General化izations, Postponents, None of the above.
Wonderful, thank you. Oral communications, this portion of the meeting is reserved for individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission on matter of matters of community concern that are not on the listed that are not listed on the agenda in the interest of time. The Chair may limit speaker to five minutes. Please be aware that state law prohibits commission from acting on non-agendaist item, however, the Chair may refer the matter to the staff to follow. Is there any oral communication? No?
My hearing isn't very good, so I.
No problem. Do you wish to address the commission on any items that are not on the agenda?
I'm so sorry, I think there's something wrong with my hearing today. Want to talk about anything that's tied on? Oh, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Is there anyone online that wishes to? No, okay, hearing none. We will then start our public hearing. And the first item is. Oh, yes, that's right, thank you. I need to ask if there's any disclosures in regards to these two items on agenda. Will we start from this side?
Yeah, I, I, I went by both sides and visited both sides.
Okay. All right, any other one?
Visited both, visited both sides.
I'm pretty sure I patronized that Jack in the Box at some point, but I didn't specifically visit this time.
That's great.
Matt, you want to indicate how the meetings run?
Let me go through my disclosure and then I will.
Okay.
I pass by the Jack in the Box twice a day on my way to work on my way back. It's close, it's, it's on my way, sorry. Say that again. As far as the going over the, the way the meetings run, yes. So first, we are going to have the staff give us a I need to speak louder. So we're gonna give the staff, they're gonna go over the item that we're gonna be discussing. Once they're done, Commissioners ask questions of the staff. After that, the applicant comes up and addresses the commission for a few minutes. Commissioners ask the applicant questions. And then if there are any public speakers that want to speak to that item, then we give them a chance to speak. And then after that's done, we close the public hearing and then we start our deliberation. Any questions? Seeing none. Let's start with the first item, first public hearing item, thirteen fifty Dell Avenue, Suite one oh three, conditional use permit. Staff? If you wish to. That on? I'm sorry, PLN two oh two four dash one seven nine.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Plan Commissioners, Tracy Tam, Associate Planner, Project Planner on this application. So the project site is located at thirteen fifty Dell Avenue, specifically Suite one oh three. It is located within an existing professional office building. The tenant space for the use is approximately a thousand six hundred and seven square feet and it is located in the CPD, which stands for Condominium Plan Development Zoning District, with a general plan designation of research and development. So the applicant is proposing a weight loss clinic within an existing professional office building. Staff considers the weight loss clinic to be a medical services clinic use. The proposed hours of operations are generally eight A M. to five P M. Tuesdays through Fridays and then eight A M. to three P M. on Saturdays. The business is closed on Sundays and Mondays. The use is considered to be a medical service clinic use because the business not only employs licensed medical professionals, which helps clients in their weight loss goals, but also there are medical professionals onsite that assist clients in learning how to perform their injections. There will be, as noted in the project description in your packet, there will be a virtual meeting with a doctor who goes over an information with the client and does prescribe weight loss medication. And the reason why this sort of business and this type of use requires a conditional use permit in this area is really to make sure that we can address any kind of land use compatibility issues and then also to make sure that the purpose of the research and development lands are maintained as intended. So on slide you see the floor plan. Since it is a multi-tenant building, this, the green color just indicates the tenant space. You'll notice that there is a reception area that is accessed from like a shared atrium area which all tenants in this building share. You also notice that there are five patient rooms and a couple of staff-only areas, including a break room. Based on the staff presentation and the information presented in your packet tonight, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve this conditional use permit and find the project exempt under CECL. And that concludes staff's presentation. The applicant and property owner here as well, should you have questions for them.
Thank you, Tracy, I appreciate that. Any questions for staff before we go to the applicant? Yes. Commissioner.
Sorry, for my edification. This is, you say this is formalizing an arrangement? Are they currently operating without a conditional use permit and we just noticed that they need one?
Correct, they are currently operating without a conditional use permit. Staff became aware of the situation and instructed them to apply for the condo use permit, which they have done. So that's why it does say to formalize.
Okay, that was the history of it, thank you.
And do you have a sense of what the current occupancy rate is for buildings there, at least that building or?
When you say occupancy, would you mind elaborating?
Yeah, like, like for the vacancy rate.
Oh, vacancy rate, okay. Vacancy rates, in my understanding of the Dell Avenue corridor, is generally pretty limited in the, with all the work that our economic development staff did on the economic development plan, I think it was identified of less than, having a less than a ten percent vacancy rate in this area.
I have a question, so generally, the reason we want to keep R and D space for R and D intended purposes is because they have a little bit lower rates which can, which would attract that type of a profession. Is, is that why we make a distinction or there's nothing to do with the, like, general rent prices?
Not necessarily, from a land use perspective, we don't quite look at it way in, in that kind of way. Perhaps in an economic development perspective, they would, but really from a land use perspective, we do want to make sure that lands intended for research and development and the uses allowed in those zones are more or less maintained. The idea there is that if you get an influx of uses that are not necessarily research and development, you could compromise your research and development lands and so it doesn't lead to necessarily a attractive environment for other users to move in. And so that's why we do have to look at these on a case-by-case basis and make a staff recommendation. In this case, as mentioned in the presentation, it is occupying an existing professional office building. I think it would be very different if it was like a warehousing space or another building that was really built for other purposes. I think, I think the conversation would be different because this is an existing professional office building. That's kind of why staff recommendation is to recommend approval of a CUP.
Thank you so much.
I have a question. I, I had a similar question to Adam, but, but I, I guess I want to delve into this a little bit longer. How long have they been? Do you know how long they've been in operation without a CUP?
I would ask the applicant if they can confirm that information.
Okay. I mean, how did we find out about this? How did it come to our attention?
Sure, so over the course of some time, the staff has had conversations about this suite number, either via appointments or over-the-counter conversations where there was questions on whether or not certain uses could move in. And so based on an application actually that I took, it was, I think, a different use at the time. But there was a conversation had in an appointment stating that a medical office needs to move, if wants to move in, it does require a conditional use permit. But at that point, staff didn't hear back from them and so these things are not atypical. Sometimes people come in, ask questions about what the permit is, understanding the process, they could be displayed from a space. And it wasn't until another conversation in the counter stated that, hey, a medical office, I think it was a different one at this point, the subject application wants to move in and I think it was at that time noted via counter conversation that the use was already operating. And so at that point, staff did say, okay, the use is operating, we still do need that conditional use permit and we need to make sure that land use compatibility matters are addressed and making sure the operational characteristics of the business do not otherwise infringe on other kind of businesses moving into the general area.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess my point is, is that I, I don't know, I've been, this is my fifth year on the, on the commission. CUPs are usually done in advance of opening up the business, I don't recall, unless it was some ancient thing, you know? So it, it bothers me a little bit that the business opened up without contacting the city and getting a CUP. Is there enforcement issue associated with this kind of thing? Are there fines that can be imposed?
There can be through our code enforcement division. Now, in this particular case, I will say Campbell does treat medical uses perhaps in a more nuanced way than surrounding jurisdictions. And so oftentimes, you do have conversations with folks over the counter and as we're asking them questions about their business and what is it they do at a specific tenant space, we when we're asking these questions, we're kind of, we're trying to discern what kind of use it is and whether, which use category, if you will, that the business falls under. And so sometimes it's not always apparent from the applicant standpoint that something like this would be considered a medical use. And that's not atypical, it has happened before, I think, in other jurisdictions. When you think of medical use, you think of your, like, dentist, you know, you think of like a hospital and that, and that sort of regard. In Campbell, it is a little more of a nuance. So I, I hear your point about operating without the benefit of permit and I will offer that sometimes in conversation with folks over the counter in appointments, it's not always understood that certain nuances do make these businesses medical.
Yeah, I mean, I, that was my big question, I, I understand, I looked up, looked them up and saw what they're doing. So I think that's all I have at the moment.
Okay, Corey, do you have any questions?
No, my question's been asked, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with. Sorry, Mike.
Yeah, Tracy, just a couple of quick ones. We say this is thirteen fifty Dell Suite one oh three, is it also Suite one oh two?
Yeah, there's a couple of suites in the building.
I mean, this, this use is one oh two and one oh three.
This use, I believe, is Suite one oh three.
Just looking at the, I can all say applicant later.
There's two other, there's two other businesses.
With, with the same name?
No, one's, one's a roofing company and the other's.
Yeah. So I think those. There were, there were Suite one oh two and one oh three that had the same name on it. It looked like it was a medical thing, but then I'll ask the applicant, no big deal. My, really, my main question is following up on what a couple Commissioner has already asked, and I don't, I don't, really don't see any issues with this use, I think it's fine, but it's just the and you got to answer about the nuance of a medical use is kind of a nuanced thing, but so we have a R and D general plan designation and the zoning is condo plan development. And we're talking about being careful about medical uses so we don't want to discourage R and D and industrial uses, that's in the report. But of course, this is a building, this is an office, general office building and it's got so many eclectic uses, including the toy stores, toy soldiers and there's a lot of office insurance that looks like, so there's so there's a lot of office uses. So would any, would, would office uses in general need a CUP in this R and D CPD zone area?
Let me just pull up the information here.
I think it's because it's medical, I think I'm not, not an office use that isn't, that is like selling widgets or something, doesn't think right.
Yeah, I guess, that's why I'm asking.
The two are treated distinct. Medical office is distinct than like professional office, just because the characteristics of them are very different. You know, you have patients coming in, sometimes if it's a medical use, hospitals are also included in that same category and so you can have like ambulatory services, so there's other aspects to medical office which makes it inappropriate to lump in the same category as professional office. Because if it's a professional office, it's kind of like this building here where I come to work Monday through Friday. In this case, professional, to answer your question, Mr. Kram, the professional office use is allowed by an administrative conditional use permit, so it doesn't have to go to Planning Commission, it is a staff level review.
So it is a conditional use permit though, administrative?
Administrative.
And that, and that, just, and getting back again, this is kind of following up on a couple of questions. So then my question would be, just to follow up would be, and it makes perfect sense from a planning standpoint, we don't want too many medical uses in this particular location because we want R and D, we want industrial and we, we want general professional office. So if there had already been, let's say hypothetically, if there was already one or two other medical uses in this building, would that have changed the staff recommendation or the whole issue here, would that, would that have made this a different type of a possibility?
I think it depends on the type of medical uses. If it's something that has a very frequent like inpatient or outpatient, it, it kind of, I think it more depends on the type of medical uses and what percentage, how big those tenant spaces are, what the percentage of the makeup of the whole building is. If it's, you know, if the entire building turns to medical, I think we would definitely have some concerns. Let's say if two, if you're mentioning that two, if there are two tenants that are already operating as medical and they make up seventy percent of the building and with this one, it's going to be eighty percent of the building, I think that would definitely be an area of concern.
And there's no cut and dried objective thing, like if it's forty-three percent, that's when we're gonna cut you down.
Right.
Twenty-eight percent, but I, but I guess, so my final question on this theme would just be, so the city of, of Campbell, any city, you just kind of in general sort of kind of keep track of how many uses there are in different areas and at a certain point, when something comes in, that would, would trigger a whole that this might be something that we have to look at closer.
It's definitely part of the staff review, so we generally can't provide the service over the counter because it does take more analysis. We do have to dig into the past permits of the area, what is currently around. I think location in this case also matters significantly too because as mentioned earlier, if, if a medical use is trying to operate out of a building clearly built for warehousing, then they're putting dollars in, investing in the space to convert it to something that it was not for its intended use and especially if it's in a locational in Dell Avenue that, you know, and limit or otherwise discourage like a large R and D user from occupying, let's say if you had a ten thousand square foot industrial building and a medical office wanted to operate five thousand of it, it's unlikely with half that building being medical, it's unlikely that it, it, it would be challenging for an R and D user to occupy the rest of the five thousand, especially if it's sort of in a prime area in the Dell Avenue area. And so that's why these applications are more case-by-case.
Yeah, no, thanks, thanks for that, all makes sense, thank you very much.
Can I ask another question? I did, the whole R and D thing, I should know this because we went over the general plan, but maybe for my edification. R and D is, is basically all industrial, light industrial, isn't it all pretty much lumped into R and D in the city? Is that, or are there different, is there something other than R and D that covers light industrial stuff?
Yes, there is, so we have two industrial zoning districts in the city. We have the research and development zoning district, we also have the light industrial zoning district. So you have two.
Okay, and, and how do we differentiate those two in terms of what can be there?
Well, generally, research and development are allowing for, kind of like the name implies, research and development, light industrial is more generally geared towards uses that are a little more impactful, may have like an odor impact, noise impact, more industrial sense. Research and development is more intended for lower intensity, if you will. Use is not quite industrial, but definitely do have sometimes a component of that in the business.
Yeah, I mean, I've worked in a lot of light industry, light industry office parks, okay? And, and a lot of them aren't actually doing any R and D. They're just a headquarters for a small company that's doing, you know, not even, there's no manufacturing, there's, there's just like, I mean, we've got two other occupants in here. One does internet sales of toy soldiers and the other one does roofing. So it's like, the all three of them are like, they're totally different. And so they're all under, obviously being accepted under R and D, it's just like, we seem to have this very loose thing and, and there's, I'm not saying it's bad that they're doing this, I think it's fine in this building based on what else is around there, but it seems we have a pretty loose idea of what goes into R and D. But the other thing that I wanted to ask about is, is it's mentioned as a CPD zone. Could you, could you explain to me why we've got a, a research and development CPD zone?
Absolutely, so CPD, the Condominium Plan Development Zoning District, that's one of our legacy zoning districts. When, if you guys recall, when we adopted our general plan and our new zoning map in April of wow, it's almost two years, yeah, April twenty twenty-three, doesn't feel two years ago, but we had retired some zoning districts as part of that effort. And so there is a code section in the municipal code which cited, which is cited in the staff report that allows for us to use uses in the comparable general plan designation, and so that would be the R and D. When this condominium plan development was resound, I think that was probably sometime in the eighties, if I recall the permit history correctly, so obviously many years ago. But with the adoption of this new general plan, we're allowed, given that provision in the code, we're allowed to utilize the uses in the R and D.
Okay, so this is like a leftover from the, the grand Dell Avenue plan that was gonna be mixed use, all kinds of things with condominiums and residential stuff on the, on the, on the water, I'm guessing, because there was this big, huge potential plan for this all the area, so maybe it came out of that?
I think it was a separate action taken. When I was looking at the prior permit history, it seemed not to align with the same timelines as you are implying, but it looks like there was a zone change sometime in the late eighties to make it, to change a zone to PD and also to condoize it. So in this building, there are residential condominiums, which you can purchase for a sometime in the late eighties, um, to make it, to change a zone to P D and also to condoize it. So in this building, um, there are residential condominiums, which you can purchase for residential uses, and there's also commercial and industrial condominiums, which this is. Um, and so that CPD, I don't think necessarily came out from the Dell Avenue efforts in the past, but rather it seems like it was a standalone application. Since I think that Dell effort was much later, this was done in the late eighties, I think, early nineties.
Alright, thanks. Uh, I, I was just curious.
So, so if, if you can please call the applicant to the stage, uh, you have five minutes, please start with your name and give us a history.
Hi, Jeff, Sean Knight, nice to meet you guys.
You got a turn to speak around, perfect?
Oh, sorry, Sean Knight, nice to meet you guys. Um, and so we have, of course, here for the, uh, plan change, change use for C N G medicine. I think a lot of the problems with understanding of this, this was necessary or not, is this is such a different model from anything that's ever been in existence before, so it was really in talking to the county, they're like, gee, that, I don't, I don't know, maybe do, maybe don't. Because ours isn't a typical, you know, urgent care kind of clinic where people are coming in and, you know, all these things. Our goal is to be mindful of business owners that are there who also are trying to do business, and we don't want to fill a parking lot. We don't want to have heavy traffic interfering. So our physicians, even though they're all board certified California physicians, they do everything virtually now, so if you're a patient, you're filling out everything ahead online. You're actually coming in, you don't need to come in, but if you prefer to, you can, and, you know, that will be where you'll see them on a sixty-five inch flat screen. Once you're approved, then our staff will teach you as medical assistants how you would do an injection, because you're going to bring the medication home with you, or we're going to mail it to your home. So ideally, we want them to at best come in once a month, and most of the time just be done from home, where they have access to the physician, they have access to support. Um, we check in with them constantly while the doctors, and so that was kind of around this where it's almost like completely virtually outside. So there was really, uh, a kind of a fogginess to this is qualified or something that's actually medical, and so we really got digging into it and go, okay, well, since there's medical assistance there, then yeah, I think we're, we're going to need to do one here. Um, we also had stuff that was non-medical professional, like a red light therapy, which any of us could put some on a machine and do, which we were doing for a while, and so when we moved more heavily into this space, it was a lot of digging to do to find out, you know, does this really require it or not? So the minute that we found out we should be having one of those, um, our efforts, as you can see, were endless to make sure that we submitted everything properly to, to make sure we're compliant. Um, primarily, we definitely wanted to be tucked away in a corner and limit where the amount of people came in, make sure we didn't interfere with other business owners. We constantly talked to them. We're all about patients having great experiences and, you know, being able to maintain them from far, so that that way it doesn't really interfere with anything that's going on, or we don't have people going down, you know, there's no place to park and things of that nature. We also occupy another space that's in there, just as I use it for my offices for a consulting firm that is nothing done on premises. It's for, uh, people that I consult with all across the country for, um, setting these up, but they're for everywhere else. Um, we do have two other locations as well, which is, um, in Orange County and Rockland, and I mean, we have serviced, um, you know, heavily in those areas, close to seven thousand patients, which changed a ton of lives, you know, and doctors can just attest to the best labs ever getting off meds. Um, it's a business where we're geared towards truly helping people. Um, but being able to do it in a way where we don't have to, um, interfere with all the other businesses that are there, such as, we're in a very corporate environment up in, uh, the Rockland area. And at first he was like, absolutely not, you know, we don't have room for that. We don't want people coming in here all day. So after he got a better idea of the model, he approved it and said, yep, it's good. And ever since, we haven't had any kind of issues with him up there. So we have that really geared in mind to also want to get this so that we can do more community outreach, be a part of, you know, give back programs and all of those two. So that's really like where our hearts at with this, and, you know, where the intention is of really wanting to, um, be able to just come out there with the use permit and, and really get into community for give backs too, but also having that in mind with all the other business owners, the space in the zoning, not to interfere with what's currently happening in.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we have questions for you.
Sure.
Actually, I want to get some clarifications. So you are the business owner, you're not the property owner?
Right, correct.
Okay, so that's number one. Thank you. Are you a physician?
No, so, uh, yep, so no, not a physician. Our doctor is actually Dr. Hartnett, who is the owner. Uh, like of the actual medical practice.
Right.
We're the owner of the medical, um, management firm.
Got it, yeah, I was going to say, because only doctors can hire doctors, you know?
Right.
If I'm not a medical, I can't go hire.
Yes, so we, we, so just so you know, um, we are set up one hundred percent compliant, licensed with the medical board. Everything is one hundred percent in line the way it's supposed to be.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I actually have more questions, but I'm going to start with, with our, uh, with Commissioner Bookbinder, if you want to start, and then the director.
I don't have any questions. Uh, staff is answering the questions I had.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you, you're Suite one oh three and one oh two?
Uh, so one oh two is more of the, we occupy for the consulting, so there's one oh three and one oh four, which now is all one oh threes pretty much.
So one oh two, one oh three, and one oh four, but is the square footage sixteen hundred?
So one oh two is, is actually not, it's, that's not part of this. Um, one, it's one oh three that got bigger is now just considered all one oh three. That's, that's the, uh, actual suite.
Oh, but, but what's in one oh two? Is that a medical use?
No, no, that one is just my, is just my offices that I go into every day and consult with people with a lot of Zoom calls. So that's not part of, um, any of this. That's, that's called my consulting.
The square footage of your entire business is sixteen hundred, or is it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, for, for what we're talking about today, yes.
But would the one oh two be extra square footage?
Separate business, though.
It's a separate business?
Yes.
Okay, but it's a medical?
No, that one is a consulting firm, uh, so, yeah, that one's, yeah, not medical.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, we just kind of lucked out and people vacated on each side, so we're like, oh, this is awesome, like, we're making a place.
So it sounds like the, um, consulting firm is, is for you to franchise these more, or is that the?
Um.
Or they're, or just to develop more, uh, uh, more businesses in other places?
You know, um, so on the consulting side, um, we've seen really good success with these, so we help non-doctor, we have a big network of physicians and, and a lot teams and all that, that, um, you know, set non-doctor entrepreneurs up in other parts of the country outside of California to do these. Um, it's not a franchise, it is just a consultancy that we do.
Alright, and, and, and you're the, like, the CEO for these three locations, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and, and you mentioned a doctor, doctor, okay?
Uh, yeah, so Dr. Hartnett is the actual owner of C M G Medicine T C, who is, you know, registered with the medical board that is, um, you know, our physician owner. Um, so we also have independent contracts with telehealth physicians.
I understand.
Yes, and that's who, and that's who that does.
Your website mentions the Dr. Knox.
Oh, yeah, so he's one of the, he's one of the, uh, main physicians that sees patients.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
So he's not, he, I was thinking he was the owner, but.
Yeah, no, not him, um.
So he's, he's one of the virtual doctors?
Yeah, he, he has the most availability that we've ever seen. He kind of just sits home and does these all day long, so we're like, hey, he's, he's a guy that we have for mostly everything.
Alright, um, yeah, that's all I have.
Questions?
Yeah, question? Sorry, Cory, did you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, so, um, so, so my questions are, uh, when you moved into this space, you must have done some interior remodeling, right? Because probably wasn't set up exact offices that you wanted.
Yes, yes.
So you had to go through building department to get those, and?
Well, essentially, actually, the, um, building did have great floors and paint, and so we just matched them, but with what was already there throughout. So what was there in existence, we really liked it, and so we just cleared with Mark A, there's carpets in these ones here, could we make these hard floor, these hardwood floors the same everywhere? So that's what we did, really. We just matched it.
So did you need some kind of a permit from the building department to make these changes or no?
Uh, no, just because it was just a replacement from carpet to hardwood, that's all we did. So we, so since it was there, we just, we just changed it from a carpet.
Just to jump in here, there is a condition of approval in the resolution stating that a building permit would be required.
Okay, thank you, because, um, because where I was going with this was that at some point in dealing with the city, um, somebody would have told you, well, what is your conditional use permit, you know, how could you be operating? And how long were you operating until this requirement came about?
Um, so we were originally in there operating with items that, like, you know, like red light and stuff for a while that doesn't, you know, that anybody can do. When it got big and we got a way to come into the weight loss side of it, then it was probably around like a year that we were operating with those, but we did check into it to make sure, do we need this? We just didn't have any clear yes or no's on that, and once we did really get the certified yes, then we were like, oh, okay, well, shoot, now that we, okay, so we do need one, so let's go, uh, let's make sure we apply.
You've been doing the, uh, GLP stuff for a year?
Yeah.
Now, um, uh, during that time when you were operating the GLP, you know, the weight loss medication, um, uh, did you have any, uh, issues with like complaints, maybe, um, police departments, you know, like traffic or parking or any?
No, zero, and one of the biggest things that, um, is required from everybody, no matter who you are, because obviously your telehealth is you, um, the forms are, you know, one hundred percent bulletproof, I can say that, they've been vetted by multiple different medical law teams. So you do have to notify your primary care physician with, within twenty-four hours of starting any of these at our clinic, just in case there's stuff that's not disclosed, as some people believe it or not, will hide things to get on these that they shouldn't, that can hurt them. So we want to make sure that their primary care knows that they've done that. So we eliminate, um, liabilities through all those forms as well and make sure those are, are, are tight.
Okay, well, thank you for your answers.
I got one more question.
Go ahead.
So the other two locations, uh, what, the two cities?
Um, so Orange is one, uh, Orange, California, and Rockland, and so.
Do they have any, do they have a, uh, conditional use permit requirement?
None, actually, the biggest, so that was what was weird is that, so now, um, we have actually helped set up independently, um, two hundred independent op, and operated, um, clinics across the country under our Net Consulting Group. They have nothing to do with us here nor in California. Never did they need one. We didn't need one in Orange, we didn't need one in Rockland. The only way he was going to let us in, in that big corporate structured building, was if we got proof we didn't need one. Um, and because of the, you know, the health and the, health and beauty, um, you know, they said absolutely not, you don't need one for what you're doing, so he allowed us and accepted the L O I. So it's very surprising, we couldn't, uh, we were talking down here, we're like, why would we need one? We've never seen this before, and so then it was to do with the zoning that was the difference.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, uh, since there's no other questions, you can, you can have a seat.
Okay, well, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Good. Um, is there anybody on, uh, is there anybody that wants to speak? Are there any other speakers on this item? Uh, and, um, so I, I believe you said the property owner and the business owner are here, or is the property owner here? Do you, do you wish to speak, property owner?
I was only here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Tell you the little backstory or?
I see. Okay, um, you, you don't have to speak if you don't want to. Um, any questions for the property owner? And, and none on the, and, and, uh, none on the, um, internet? Cory, no questions? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing so we can do our deliberation questions. Okay, so, um, we've heard from the applicant and, um, any questions? Any questions among us, or any questions for staff?
I can comment.
Yes, please.
We can, we can all comment if we want. Um, no, I, I, uh, the only thing that struck me was the whole thing with it not, that it being an operation and sounds like to me that maybe Campbell's a little bit more stringent than other cities, and that, uh, the, the applicant may was possibly a little surprised at the idea that we, they had to get a conditional use permit, so, um, otherwise, I learned a lot about GLP, um, in the last couple of days, and, uh, of course, we see all the ads for it anyway. Um, so now I understand it better, and it, this sounds fine, I, I, uh, you know, um, I don't have any issue with it being in that location, and it seems like a, um, a, a good business, a good business to have, fills a space. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I have a question for staff. So did you know that they, uh, the one oh three also cover Suite one oh four and got bigger, and then they have, so it seems like, you know, most of this building is this business plus consulting business, and especially with the roofing, you know, I don't see how roofing is a research and development.
I, I, I'm assuming it's there because it said so online. I'm not sure if the roofing people are there.
I see.
Um, but it's listed, it's, it's listed at that address.
Okay, um, so can you, or can you tell us what you think about, you know, um, they're getting bigger in that space for something that's sort of compatible but not exactly compatible?
At the a thousand six hundred or so square footage, um, staff recommendation remains the same. I mean, I heard from the applicants that that's the square footage that they are operating out of, um, and in which case, if they were to expand, then that would also require an amendment to the conditional use permit.
Okay. Okay, um, if there's no other questions, I'm open for a motion.
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, make a motion approving a conditional use permit, PLN two zero two four dash one seven nine. Formalize the establishment of an existing weight loss clinic within a professional office building, and finding the project categorically exempt under section one five three zero one of the California environment.
Excellent, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, any second, roll call, please.
Mr. Meduski.
Aye.
Mr. Caesar.
Aye.
Mr. Rossky. Mr. Buckbender.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Aye.
Mr. Field.
Aye.
Chair Kamkar.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, that motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Alright, um, okay, thank you. So the next item is a public hearing, uh, the second public hearing item, thirteen oh one Camden Avenue, conditional use permit modification with site and architectural review, that's the jack in the box. That one is, um, uh, let's see, PLN two oh two three dash one ninety-six. And I get, uh, Tracy, you're doing that one as well? Or is Nishant?
That should be Nishant who is.
Yeah. It'll be me.
Thank you, Nishant, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Nishant Sione, I'm the project planner for this project. This is the Jack in the Box Conditional Use Permit Modification and Site and Architectural Review Permit. The project site is at the southeast corner of Camden Avenue and White Oaks Road. It is a half acre lot. Both the zoning and land use designation are a general commercial, and the site is developed with an existing approximately three thousand square foot jack in the box. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit modification and site and architectural review permit. The applicant originally requested a site and arc permit only to allow changes to signage, parking lot striping, and the building exterior. The jack in the box with drive-through by itself is allowed by the existing use permit, but it currently operates twenty-four hours a day. When reviewing the application for the site and arc permit, staff determined that the existing use permit doesn't actually allow twenty-four hour operation and needs to be modified to allow it. The applicant then subsequently applied for the C U P mod. This site plan shows the existing site layout, including the drive-through, parking, and landscaping. Access is off both Camden and White Oaks. The drive-through entrance and exit are both off Camden Avenue, and the site shares the driveway on White Oaks Road with an auto repair shop to in the south. As part of the project, lanes and parking stalls will be restripped, landscaping will be replaced with new trees and bushes, but the entire layout that you see here, including the landscaping footprint, isn't going to change. The site meets minimum parking requirements, but doesn't conform with some current standards, which are detailed in the report. However, because of all, because all of these non-performing aspects of the site were lawfully established by the existing use permit, before current standards went into effect, they can remain as long as they won't be enlarged or expanded. Staff is also recommending some conditions to improve safety on the site. We will require a walkway conducting the sidewalk on Camden to the walkway already on site. This will be where the blue arrow is. And we will require signs that warn drivers entering the drive-through to watch for pedestrians and to enter the drive-through from Camden only, rather than from within the site. The applicant will also need to upgrade both driveways off Camden to be ADA compliant. This is a rendering of the new building. It will be in the same location and have the same footprint as the existing one. The roof, wall siding, and lighting will be replaced. Plans also show three new businesses. Plans also show three new business signs on the building. The code allows for two for this site. Three signs would require a sign permit. Jack in the Box has chosen to apply for a deferred sign permit for those signs. So the signs you see on the plans are just placeholders and will not be approved by this permit. Again, Jack in the Box is already operating twenty four hours a day, but that requires a CUP mod. The site doesn't have a history of nuisance issues and staff haven't received any public comments, but we are recommending conditions of approval that will help prevent future issues, including due to late night operation. These include limits on noise generation, maintenance requirements and the site safety conditions I just covered. In summary, the project is in existing use that will not be intensified. Site has no history of nuisance issues and conditions will prevent future ones and the project meets necessary findings. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Any questions for Nishant? Or the Commissioner Craig?
Uh, yeah, Nishant, I uh, I just like, like all of us, you know, I've driven by that a million times. This was the first time I actually went in the driveway and it's such a funky, it's an unusual. Shouldn't say funky. It's a really a pretty unusual site. I, I guess my question for you is that our, have our traffic engineers looked at that? And the thing that uh, that gets me is that the, the entrance driveway is so close to that right turn off of that uh, you know, highway seventeen, it gets so much traffic. I, I, I missed, I missed the driveway. I, I went in the out driveway when I went in there and I can't be the first one to do that. But did our traffic engineers look at this? Or anything they can do about uh, about that situation in terms of traffic safety?
They did look at it. They, they didn't have comments uh from traffic specifically. Public Works is uh recommending conditions requiring the driveway improvements. Um, you're right, it is an odd site layout and realistically, it's not something we would approve today. Um, but the site layout was approved under the existing use permit. Because it's not changing, um, it's allowed to remain as is. Uh, but there, there are some, some issues with, you know, adequate backup distance for some of the parking spaces, some of the parking spaces back out into the driveway. Um, the Camden driveways are, are a little bit cramped, but existing and lawfully established conditions.
I guess the one thought I just had is a complete lame, lame man and know nothing about this, but I would have, I wondered if the traffic people thought about the entrance, changing the entrance driveway to the one further from the turn and the exit one then closer to the turn. Uh, of course, the exit would then would be a problem, but I it just seemed, yeah, obviously this is just such a really unusual site. Uh, you don't know if they did any kind of deliberations to that sort of depth, do you?
Uh, the traffic engineers?
Yeah.
No, they, they didn't uh suggest or consider any changes to, to the drive through entrance or exit.
Okay. And just a final question is, and you, you did talk about this. So you did mention in your report, so four, four of the parking spaces are too short by today's standards for the, for, I guess for backing up, but they're still, but they're still gonna stay there because they're already there and.
Correct.
Nothing changing still, that's fine.
The stalls themselves meet the current standards, but some of them don't meet the backup requirements.
Okay, and, and even though they don't meet the backup requirements, they're, they're grandfathered in, uh, they don't have to make any changes with that.
The existing nonconformities.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I'll just have a quick question. So was in, in the, with the nineteen sixty eight permit, was that when the drive through was put in place?
Yeah, the sixty eight permit did approve a drive through and then the site layout was changed in nineteen seventy nine. Uh, still included a drive through and that approved the layout that you see now.
Thank you.
So I just, I just, I, I'm sure you guys just answered this, but the, the, so there's nothing that's uh, in terms of the, the actually the parking lot striping, that, that is, is that gonna be just the parking lot portion where the stripes are gonna be improved? Are they, are they gonna actually restripe the, the arrows too? Does the arrow really bad?
They'll restripe the parking um space, striping, arrows, they'll add uh new informational and directional signs. Um, the striping along the drive through is gonna be redone and then we're also uh adding those, those signs as conditions. So all the, the paint basically on the pavement will be redone.
Okay. A, a, and the landscaping that's new landscaping is being put in is, is the ones that are in the front of uh the entrance here. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, there, there's landscaping in the front and then also on White Oaks and then there's a little bit on this side um by the drive through within the site.
Okay, so you're saying that the curb side landscaping is gonna be changed a little bit, that right by the road?
Yeah, so the, the footprint will remain the same, but they're gonna be replacing the trees and bushes with new ones.
That's good. Every little bit helps. Okay, um, yeah, that's all I have.
I got a continuation from SARC. Uh, Nishant, we had talked about making the pedestrian walkway more obvious and that was feedback we had given to the developer. Did they have any response to that?
No comments on that, no um opposition or anything. So we've included that as a condition.
So they have to do it?
Yeah, yeah.
Fantastic.
Okay, yeah, um, uh, Corey, any questions?
No, this was a SARC item, so I think we went over it pretty thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you. So um, uh, I actually passed by this, you know, um, you know, basically um, every day and uh, one of the things I noticed was when you are on White Oaks approaching Camden, there are two left turn lanes that turn towards Camden or San Tomas. And then there is a third lane that goes through or to Kurtner. That through lane um can also get a left arrow, so it can enter highway seventeen on ramp north. Because the, the on ramp that's just south of this site at the stop sign, there's, there's cars, you know, uh, coming off the highway. There is cars that wanna go through. There is cars that wanna turn. It's a very dangerous um on ramp situation that if a left arrow were to be added to the right lane here, then people that don't wanna take a chance and, you know, turn into the uh highway on ramp at the stop sign, they can just pass the stop sign and do it at the light. Once the green light is on, they can easily go and turn and so I've talked about that with traffic engineer, you know, and um, he had said um, uh, you know, county, I think county controls that intersection and state controls it because it's like an on ramp, on off ramp. So it's not as simple as city recommending something, you know, but anyway, I think, I think we have an opportunity to improve that, but you know, I don't think it should be this business's obligation to do so. Um, any improvement to that side looks good, you know, um, I've never seen that side extremely busy, you know, so parking, it's not like it's an issue. Um, and um, and I like it that's close to my house, so I can, you know, stop by every once in a while. Uh, with that, I have no other questions. Is there anybody? Is the applicant here that they want to address us if they want to?
I'm, I'm not sure. I didn't actually receive confirmation from them. I don't think they are.
Okay, um, is there anybody online that wish to speak to this fact? Oh, okay, hearing none. Um, I think I'm gonna close the public hearing. And um, so we can do our own deliberation. Any questions or any issues?
I don't have strong opinions about this. It seems like a like a lateral move, if you will, that it was a jack in the box. It will be a similar jack in the box, just with a straight parking, slightly different landscaping. I don't have strong opinions about that.
I think it's fine. It's a good site for a twenty four hour business for sure. That's for sure. I, I, I do think it's a little bit of a more dangerous than most places uh traffic wise and uh it's good to take out the pedestrians' striping. I can't imagine too many pedestrians actually going to that business because of the location, but they'll, they'll be selling them. They'll definitely be safer for them, so that's a plus.
Exactly. So, and, and you're absolutely right. That right turn and immediate entrances is, you know, it startles few people because some people coming off the freeway wanna turn their, on their right lane sometimes. Some, but, but they couldn't change it to the other one because you, you wanna be keep turning left.
To do a lot of changing.
You have to keep turning left to be able to um take the food and, you know, hand them on your, so.
Actually, I, I have a good comment question.
Go ahead.
Um, cause I went in, I went, I pulled, I, I pulled, I was coming home, I was coming back on, on seventeen north and I pulled off. I, I pulled off, I pulled off throughout time, but so I pulled into the Jack in the Box parking lot. Okay, to look at it. And then to get out, I, I couldn't get out on White, on White Oaks, okay? It was really backed up, so I was gonna pull off and go down Camden, okay, and make a U-turn. So, so what I did was I went through the entrance.
The driveway.
That, that's the drive in entrance. And that doesn't seem like a good thing. It should be blocked, I, I believe, so that the only way once, I mean, I don't know what the, the movement is when, when somebody goes in and parks rather than go through the drive in. How do they then get out? You know, they can back out to go to the White Oaks, but there is an opportunity for them to go out the entrance. Um, uh, that takes you to Camden and that's really, that's really hard to do properly with all the traffic. And I'm wondering if with this design, is there anything changed that, that doesn't allow that to happen anymore?
I think they can add a, an arrow, a large arrow on the ground saying this is entrance only.
I, I, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask if, if that had been an issue that came up.
It was, yeah, we, we had discussed this with the applicant and um requested that they add curbing along this drive through to prevent people from entering in and out from it. The issue is that there are these parking spots here and those are typically used by employees. So blocking this off would make, make it difficult for employees to go in and out. Um, so we're not gonna be adding curbing here, but we will require a sign to be placed somewhere.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not the area that I was talking about. I'm talking about up by Camden. Up right here, going, going out that way.
Right here?
No, I mean, on the, on the entrance to the drive in.
That's the one.
I'm coming, coming from the parking lot. I went that way to get out Camden. So I went, I went the wrong way. But I, and I kind of knew it was not the right way, but my alternative was to actually go through the drive in and come out the other side of the building. So right now you can drive, you can drive from the parking lot to that entrance to the drive in and go out on Camden. That doesn't seem to be a very good thing.
But you can also use the exit driveway. You don't have to be in the driver lane. You could be next to it and use that exit driveway as well.
Yeah, but, but in theory, there's maybe somebody in the, in the drive in, so.
No, no, no. Next to the drive, next to the drive through, there is room, pass by it.
There is.
Yes.
On, on, on that uh east side?
Exactly. So you don't have to.
It doesn't look like it, but.
Uh, I have.
You, you would have to enter the, the drive through eventually to exit out.
You can get by the drive through that way?
No, I, I, I don't believe it's wide enough to let cars drive next to it without entering.
Anyway, I, I just brought it up as a question of whether or not there should be some way to keep people from going uh, out that, out that route, whether, whether that's important or not.
Can I, can I make a difference? Like, they, our staff reviewed this. It wasn't, we asked if there were lots of, there haven't been incidents. I feel like we're kind of speculating about.
Okay.
Problem with the.
But it was talked about.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, it like, this wasn't identified as some like really problematic location. Nishant, keep me honest, but like, I think we all agreed it was like odd, was a lot that's odd about this lot, but it wasn't causing a lot of incidents to cause us to, you know, mandate any bigger changes.
Yeah, we, we don't have any history of, of safety issues and accidents on the site.
Right, so we heard that in SARC and that's when we sort of were like, all right, well.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, okay, excellent. Um, uh, so if there's no other questions, uh, uh, Corey, I want to make, make sure I check in with you.
Um, no, just to add on to the exiting through the, where you exit comment, if you, I, I frequented this place as a youth, I will say, um, and it is a little bit awkward, but if you're exiting the drive through driveway, the person waiting for their food is like a little ways back. If you can see, there is room to get out. It's a little awkward, but if they're stopped and there are being traffic laws and you're not both going at the same time, you can squeeze out that way in front of that car at the drive through window. So, but yeah, I'm fine with it.
Thank you for the clarification. That's exactly what my experience was. Um, once people get their food, then they just go, they don't, you know.
I just wonder what you were doing there.
Yeah, should I make a motion?
Yes.
All right. Uh, so I'll make a motion recommending that the city council approve a conditional use permit modification with site and architectural.
Oh, city council?
Oh, oh, hold on.
The, the planning commission approves this.
Planning commission.
We're going up a level. Yes.
Got it.
It says, um, so city council.
We should be on thirty one.
Thirty one or twenty four.
Yeah. Right?
Um, well, does, da, 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 da.
Did I make the resolution? Resolution of the planning commission of the city of Campbell, approval of a conditional use permit with a site and architectural review permit to formalize existing twenty four hour operation and allow changes to site signage, parking lot striping and the building facade of an existing quick service drive through on property located thirteen oh one Camden Avenue number PLN two oh two three dash one ninety six.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay.
I think that first part has a type.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, roll call please.
Mr. Meduski.
Hi.
Mr. Caesar.
Uh, I.
Mr. Strasky.
Hi.
Mr. Buckbender.
Hi.
Mr. Gray.
Hi.
Lester Fields.
Hi.
Chair Campcar.
Hi. Okay, that motion passes unanimously as well. Um, next item. It's item on the agenda. The agenda. Okay, we are at the new business. Uh, planning commissioner subcommittee reports. So, um.
No report.
No report, okay?
I have a report.
You have an update? You have an update?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so um, so for the Missing Middle Land Use Subcommittee, um, that uh, Campcar.
Chair Campcar.
Chair Campcar and I are on, thank you. Um, so, so we're meeting next week and then the following um planning commission meeting will have um, an update and uh timeline uh as well as uh kind of a problem statement. So it's a good understanding of what, what we're working towards.
Or what we used to call define the issue. She knows what I'm. Gloss. But find the issue. Okay. Um, okay, uh, thank you for that. And next item, report of community development director.
Sure, since you're so fast, I'll use more of your time here this evening. Uh, so a couple of reports. Uh, I recognize that you hadn't met late March. Back to a council meeting in March to report outs. Uh, March eighteenth, council uh did approve a moratorium on new smoke shops. So our staff uh recognized that I think we have the highest concentration of smoke shops uh of all cities in Santa Clara County. I'm not sure what title we aim for. Uh, as you know, smoke shops and promulgation of tobacco has a lot of negative health impacts, so we uh staff proposed a moratorium for the council to at least stop the new smoke shops coming into Campbell and then in the interim, we would look at uh options for perhaps regulating it more. Disperse them, keep them away from schools or limiting the amount to the city. Uh, so council did adopt that at moratorium. Uh, if you're a smoke shop purveyor, uh, you'll be new ones for some time. Uh, number two, um, and recognizing Chair Campcar, the council did uh accept all the work plans for all the boards and commissioners and I want to recognize that Chair Campcar did tend and had some very nice things to say uh during the meeting. Um, and there was a recognition of the uh, the commission's request. Uh, you'll remember on the League of California Cities training going from uh two in the first term to one per term. So. Uh, one way or another, we'll work on, we'll get into the ordinance as a process. And they also uh, received an update on the climate action plan and it's on my to-do at some point uh, as that moves down the road to bring our environmental program specialists to you. Present out where that's at and especially the land use items that might cross over the planning mission. Uh, last couple of items, uh, I've threatened to you for some time that we have a gigantic omnibus ordinance coming to you that will clamp a lot of loose ends. Uh, and I finally got confirmation from our senior planner that's coming to you in May, so hold on to your seats. Uh, that's coming to you soon. Uh, we'll also come to you probably in late May with some uh, thoughts, ideas, recommendations on potentially looking at new housing policies and programs. Uh, as I mentioned, for uh, uh, cities not being its arena, there's a lot of things outside of our control. But uh, we're looking at some options if we wanna do some tweaks in zoning or programs and policies that might stimulate housing. See what we can do.
That omnibus ordinance?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Um, so will we get that a little bit further in advance of the meeting or will that be the typical Thursday before the Tuesday meeting?
Uh, I like to not overcommit and underdeliver. Uh, so at this point, I could commit to a Thursday delivery. I think we gave this to you parts, so it would be a study session. So you're not pressured to get an ordinance, make a recommendation before. I think our approach, not confirm with our senior planners to walk you through broadly what's in there. Initial feedback and then actually come back after that, after you've given some broad feedback, uh, with the, so be one of two parts of this. Uh, last couple of bits, not really in the planning realm, but it's kind of nifty little programs you're running. I thought you might like to hear, so uh, uh, we do have a full-time code enforcement officer who uh, responds to complaints. Uh, some of those items you see coming for you. Uh, one of the tools we often use is fines and uh, through that, uh, the city collects working forty to eight thousand dollars in fines per year and code enforcement fines. Normally that had gone just washed into the general fund. Uh, but we stood up, uh, what was called a community restitution fund about three years ago to just take that money and dedicate it to try and prevent white in the community. And so, uh, was happy to report out, we've had two, I call them trash bashes, where we sponsor events where with the haulers, we go out and bring out the dumpsters and versus people just like not knowing what to do and spilling trash in their neighborhoods. So we had a really successful event at Charmin Palm, I'm sure you folks know where that's at. Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's a lot of tight apartments where people don't have options. So we rolled out ten dumpsters in one Saturday.
Nice.
So it was nice to, to work with our public works folks, the trash haulers to actually try and help out the community. And upcoming, uh, there'll be three new murals in the uh, Moscato's Creek Trail that we're paying for. Uh, if we'll, murals will go out of paint, uh, often found instead of tagging things, uh, very generally if a mural is there, uh, it'll be respected and you won't see the tagging.
Where are these gonna be?
Uh, I have to report back on the exact locations. I've, I've seen them. They're on the underpath, the underpass. Yeah, yeah, uh, I think one is seventeen. And maybe near there as you go under the freeway and you have that marked wall to your right.
Are we inviting?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Are we inviting some of the taggers to actually help on the murals?
Could be a win-win, yeah, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, great artistic, uh, options.
Because.
Portico, yeah. Uh, last two things, uh, kind of picking up on the bits from the planning commission. Uh, we have uh, rolled out um, QR codes that we've given to our brokers. So to the point of, hey, don't advertise a space, have someone move in. Realize after the fact, you need a CUP or a ten improvement and try and rework all that. It's really awkward. So um, number one, we still have an economic development page that just kind of has folks wanting steps of doing the right thing. And then we have little stickers now, especially in like downtown or walkable spaces where we're trying to get brokers. Or we might just put them in the window to say, hey, are you interested in this space? Start here. And it will at least lead folks on the right path of asking the questions of building permit or something first. Working with business owners and brokers, get folks to just ask the right questions. And related to that, uh, I did wanna report out, uh, we do have a new icon called Manager starting soon. We've had interim support from Leslie Parks, you've seen her here. Um, it's unofficially announced, but I know we made an offer to someone and they should be starting the other month. And last but not least, uh, I think the Warriors run by twenty. Let you know that, maybe you're watching this.
Just, just one quick comment regarding, you mentioned QR codes, you know, we, our IT department was telling us when you scan a QR code, look at it before you press. Because that's a wonderful way of, you know, people catching you because you, you trust it. And that's a really easy way for them to substitute that for something else. And you, you wouldn't be able to tell that's not the real one, it's a fake, you know, so, so at least look at the, the, the link it's sending you to.
I, I have a question. Um, it seemed to be on your, on your work, on your department's work plan. Tentatively, we're looking into a housing commission. Are you, is that, did that survive?
Uh, hmm, survived.
Survived the work plan approval?
Yeah, discussion, uh, probably one of the top four items on, on our housing program this year. And I'd say it's probably summer range to come to the council and present the housing commission idea and options. I'll understand that.
Is that, I wanted to send you some stuff because I had actually approached councils six or seven years ago about it. And did some research, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I will say Campbell is struggling generally on filling my observation, but the clerk was like this, I'm filling absent order and commission seats. So, what to come on. Bring a new commission or should a condition, commission be consolidated and do any more sort of groundwork?
That's the plan B kind of thing that I was thinking about. A new commission or since we, they have less work here, it could be consolidated with planning.
Any options?
Okay. Just putting it out there.
Uh, I have nothing additional to add.
Okay, thank you. Uh, unless there's anything else. With that, we will adjourn till the meeting of April twenty.
Sorry, uh, real quick. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Adam, I cannot hear you at all.
Sorry, didn't turn on my mic. Sorry, um. The multimodal plan page says that the city council will be awarding it next week. When will we be hearing more about that? Uh, agenda should be out later this week. It's targeted to be on next week's. Okay, um, and after that, like, there will be a schedule for the actual planned things? There would, yeah, I don't, uh, we'd have to look at multimodal plans and like right away improvements normally don't cross over too much with planning commission. I think that. Oh, no, I just want to. Some point there'd be a presentation, but the next step would be a schedule and a kickoff meeting with the council. Probably likely in the late summer. Okay, um, and I just wanted to, uh, tell everybody that I had some resources about permitting and so on that I sent to Rob, to have everybody, sent out to everybody. It should be in the early May packet.
Cool. Thank you. You're adjourned till April twenty-second.
Thank you.
Okay, go Warriors.
Yeah. So, three games left.